To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and for our republic and all the rights and privileges that we have. We thank you for the ability to come here and talk peaceably about the people's business. We pray that you be with us and grant us wisdom as we consider the people's business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
May I have the floor computer, please? The first item of business on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda with additional items for consideration. Both of these items are for consideration on the consent agenda. The first is the appointment of John Winkler to Transportation Committee. The term expires 9/24/20 and it is in the Chancellor District. The second item is the approval of right-of-way agreement for Columbia Gas to install a new gas line within the right-of-way area to replace the current line under the site of the future Spotsylvania County Animal Shelter. And those are the two additional items for consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We can vote.
The next item of business this evening is we have two award presentations and special recognitions. The first is a farmland preservation award from, for the planning department.
I'd like to read the certificate of recognition. Whereas in June 2019, the Virginia Farmland Preservation Fund surpassed 100 working lands conservation easements supported through the program provided an occasion to recognize its success. And whereas agriculture and forestry are Virginia's first and third largest industries, and preserving farm and forest land is crucial to ensuring the many economic, environmental, and social benefits they provide. And whereas the local purchase of development rights program supported by the Virginia Farmland Preservation Fund enhances the viability of Virginia's agriculture and forestry by empowering individual localities to limit development on the farms and forest lands that each community has deemed a priority for conservation. And whereas conservation easements supported by the Virginia Farmland Preservation Fund perpetually ensure these protected lands remain available as working farms and forest lands. And whereas community leaders in 16 localities across the Commonwealth have recognized the importance of preserving farm and forest land and the benefits preserve lands provided to citizens of the Commonwealth. And whereas since its creation in 2008, these 16 localities have utilized 11,896,900 in matching funds from the Virginia Farmland Preservation Fund to protect over 100 farms, converting 13,917 acres. And whereas the Virginia Farmland Preservation Fund and Local Purchase of Development Rights Program are a robust partnership demonstrating a shared commitment to the preservation of Virginia's working farms and forest lands. Now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize the Virginia Farmland Preservation Fund and the localities of Virginia for surpassing the important milestone of securing more than 100 working lands conservation easement, and extend to all those associated with the program sincere best wishes for confirmed success. And I call this observation to the attention of all our citizens.
Services. This is the 2019 Virginia Governor's Technology Award, and this is for the Fiber Initiative Government to Government. And Jane Reeve, an IT staffer here.
On September 5th, 2019, the Information Services Department received a 2019 Virginia Governor's Technology Award for our Fiber Initiative project. Spotsylvania County initiated a multi-year plan to run fiber connectivity strategically throughout the county. By collaborating with schools along existing fiber routes and conduit, the county's 2.2 million capital investment has provided stability and redundancy to 30-plus county-owned facilities and has allowed the additional implementation of advanced technology to improve operation and save annual costs, which has resulted in a reduction of overall operational costs by approximately 357,000 per year. This project has led to a successful implementation of a new digital alert notification system, enhanced online in-station first responder training, and access to general county solutions that were previously not available. Community centers now have public wireless. Library stops with computers, books, and other library services have been made available in rural areas of the county where neither library nor broadband service is readily available to residents. Congratulations.
Next item of business on the agenda this evening is the presentation of the consent agenda. Item number one is to approve the minutes from September 10th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. Item number two is the appointment of Kimberly B. Pomato as the zoning administrator and assistant director of zoning and planning. Item three is to approve the contract renewal to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for Medical Dental Vision and EAP Insurance Services. This is the fourth and final renewal option on this contract. Item number four is to approve the contract to Telephone Answering Service of Fredericksburg Incorporated to provide transportation services for DSS clients. Item five is to approve the task order to O'Brien Gear Engineers for Water System Master Plan Amendments, the AWIA Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan in the amount of $96,154. This is a 50-50 cost share with the city of Fredericksburg. Item number six is the approval of a budget adjustment and appropriation necessary for consultant services to review the decommissioning estimate for the Spotsylvania Solar Energy Center. Item seven is to approve the FY 2021 budget calendar. Item eight is to authorize a public hearing for rollback tax code revisions. Item nine is recommendations for the 2020 Board of Equalization. This term shall commence on 1/1/20 and expire 12/31/20. Item 10 is Todd's Tavern and Berkeley Community Center well replacements in the amount of $200,000. Item 11 and item 12 are the additional items for the agenda. This is the appointment of John Winkler to the Transportation Committee. The term expires 9/24/20. This is for the Chancellor District. And item 12 is the approval of right-of-way agreement for Columbia Gas to install a new gas line within the right-of-way area to replace the existing line under the site of the future Spotsylvania County Animal Shelter. And that's your consent agenda.
Are there any members who wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Mr. Jakobowski?
Can I pull on number eight and 11, please?
Mr. Ross?
Number three, please.
Mr. Benton?
Ten.
Three, eight, 10, and 11. We'll open the first public comment period. This is for the consent agenda only. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board about any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the first public comment period. Is there a motion for the remaining consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Skinner. We can vote. If I can find mine.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ed, I got a quick question. When you bury in a gas line underneath the future site of the animal shelter, there's always that possibility that when they go to dig the foundations and stuff of that, is that well protected? How deep is it? And how does it affect the animal shelter is what I'm asking?
I've got Mr. Love Day here, but I believe that this is to abandon the existing, which would be under the new slab, and grant a new easement for a new line, but I'm going to let him answer that.
Yes, Mr. Petrie, put your on target on that. The gas line easement is actually to relocate a gas main that's under the proposed addition to allow it to be constructed. So this is actually be moving the line from its current location to a facility adjacent to that expansion area to allow us to construct it. Just relocation.
That's relocation, so it's not going under the...
It is not going under, it is relocation.
Okay, thank you. That's it, sir.
Number three first. Do I go in numerical order?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ross?
So my question on this was, are these all separate contracts? I'm just trying to learn county insurance a little bit more. Or is there one contract that includes all of them? And then the follow-on question to that would be, do county employees need to sign up for each of these individually? Or is it a collective sign up for one and you get all of these?
Yeah, if I may, I'm going to bring Lori Newman, our HR Director, up, who's our health insurance expert.
Hi, good evening. No, they are all bundled, so dental vision and medical are all together. They can choose Key Care 20 or Key Care 30. Each have the vision and the dental included.
And the EAP, too? I just looked it up. I didn't know what that meant.
The, okay, that's an employee plan that is included with it, and it's free. It costs nothing else to the employees. So it's not just the employees, but it's members of their household that can get access to, you know, if...
Perfect. Now, I looked it up. I figured it out, but I didn't know it first.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, go ahead. I think I'm not alone in not knowing. I had to Google it. So I'm sorry for interrupting you.
EAP? Yeah, that's an employee assistant program. So there is a long laundry list of other offers that Anthem does give to us for free. It has to do with identity theft if somebody needs access to some legal fee, some legal help and instruction. There is some help if somebody needs some psychological help. And it's not just available to the employees, but it's also anybody that lives in the employee's household. And that is free. It's included with our Anthem costs.
Gotcha. So this is one contract renewal that covers everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then when a county employee pays, either for Key Care 20 or 30, those are all bundled, medical, dental, vision, and EAP?
Right.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Motion to approve.
If there's no further discussion, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Order, I think number eight was next.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I would ask that the board table this. Upon further review, the language still needs some tweaking, and this would give us time to tweak the language of the proposed code changes and bring it back at a future board meeting. Seven yes, motion passes.
And number 10?
Ben, this is you again, I think. I was just wondering why it's so expensive for, I guess, two wells at two community centers, when I know we already have two wells there on each, well, one on each one.
The, excuse me, the community centers, which are scheduled for well replacement, are the Todd's Tavern and Berkeley Community Centers. Those centers have an existing, basically, it's a bored well, which is a 24-inch diameter, a concrete well. It's pretty shallow, probably 30 feet deep. And based on sampling results, those indicated they may be under surface, influence of surface water. So working with VDH, we move forward plans to replace those wells with Class II compliant wells. Give me one second, we'll find the cost breakdown here.
I'm just, I guess I'm just too used to residential, you know, 10, 12 thousand.
Might have to go off memory here a second. The, sorry for that. The big difference between a residential well construction, the public well construction, is mostly in the well development. When we looked at $100,000 for each well location, we're accounting for about $10,000 in engineering and survey support, because we have to actually have to get the site permitted by VDH. They have to come out in the field, look at it, compare it to where it is, to drainage areas, septic fields. We have to find the septic field. Has to be no more than, has to be over 50 feet from existing boundary lines, which we may have to do some survey work on Todd's Tavern, just because we're not sure exactly where those well area, where actually where the boundary lines are at, because it's been so long since somebody surveyed it. The well development, which includes design, sampling, connection, pump, pump controls, and the sampling that refers to is actually the water quality sampling, which is a long drawn-out process. They can take quite a while. We're talking about a matter of months of pulling multiple samples over a period of time to make sure that water is a sufficient quality to meet VDH requirements. That right now is estimated about $50,000. And then the actual well drilling, considering that's a Class II well, which has a longer encasement that's required down to bedrock, we're assuming around $20,000 for base cost on that, and then up to another $10,000 in additional casement depth and rock contingency. This is very much in line with what Honey Run Phase Two is running us right now for the well we're drilling out there at that facility. That well was estimated at 500 feet. I believe it's like 930 feet at this point to get down to, not only to a location that will yield enough water to produce for the facility, but also the required rock encasement that's there.
Did you say 900?
900 feet at Honey Run Park. The basic treatment, we estimate about $7500. That would be basically your softeners, iron. Does not include any type of UV or chlorination that may or may not be required should the water not be found to be a sufficient quality. The existing facilities, the water is already classified that we would have to install either UV or chlorination within 18 months if we aren't going to go after a new water source, which in essence this is doing. And then we have the additional well abandonment, which we're estimating about $2,500. So yes, it is not even, kind of apples to oranges to residential well installation, but it's just based on the VDH rules and requirements that are in the books that we have to abide by.
So basically, a government entity is causing another government entity to...
It's in the intent to protect public health.
15 times. All right. I'm sorry, I'm not getting on you, Ben. I just, those four dagon well just seems crazy. But I'll move, make a motion to approve.
Mr. Skinner?
Just, Ben, so you're checking the water at 900 feet down below. Are you drilling a smaller hole before you put the big well in? How do they check that?
The, what they typically do, like in Honey Run Phase Two, which is the 900-foot well, it's just a standard six-inch bore. They typically will go down, try to go down at least 500 feet, and then they'll continue to go down and do drawdowns on the well to make sure that they're meeting, I believe, 15 gallons a minute for the actual well recharge rate and the amount of water that'll produce. So at Honey Run Phase Two, you know, they went full, they went down 500 feet, could not meet the GPM or the gallons per minute demand, so they kept taking it down. And I believe they ended somewhere around 930 feet for the actual well. So once, once it's cited, basically you dig until you hit the appropriate amount of production for that, for that well.
One more question. Why can't it be a residential well?
It's basically, the VDH classifies these as transient non-community wells, which are a different classification. Basically, once they review the usage rates on those community centers, they classify as transient non-community and therefore went to a higher elevation. The other parks, we have like Marshall Park, Errett Park, those have wells as well, but we are, those actually came back fine, because they're actually the bored wells. They go, so they're the smaller casing, they're more modern wells, so they're in compliance.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to put you through that.
No problem. Sorry I couldn't find my paperwork.
There's a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, we can vote. Dr. Tramley?
Seven yes, motion passes.
I just wanted, Ms. Palma, do you want to stand for us? Congratulations, I guess. You've been blessed. Well deserved.
Number 11 is next.
Yeah, thank you. I was just looking, and did I read it correctly, that it's a year appointment? And I thought that was standard practice, that board appointments go with board terms. I know I had to do it, and I was just wondering why we're not in this case? Because it is our committee. It's not like it's a state mandated one.
I don't have any information on that. I can check, if you give me a minute, I can check to see what the, what the appointment is and how long.
Well, I mean, it says that it will expire on September 24th, 2020, and it just seems like an odd term to have to appoint, like to fill out a term. I mean, typically these terms are for board terms, and that's beyond, I'm just wondering why we did that.
Yeah, I can, I can look at the bylaws. We weren't requested to review anything previously, so I can go back. I can look now and check, find the bylaws if I have them here, and double check and see, see what's called for in the minutes. Might have something right here. I'm reading it here. It says, shall serve the term of one year or the remainder of a predecessor's term. It doesn't have the additional language that says, obviously, whichever is less. It may be the intent that it be whichever is less. I think the board could certainly, you know, appoint to the remainder of the term if it feels that it's appropriate.
Well, I'll just say that I remember I made appointments a few years ago, and it was brought up that it would be going beyond. And I just think that's standard practice. And I know that some members had concerns about, I think it was Planning Commission, that actually went into the beginning of terms. So I just think that that's standard practice and how we should do it. That's why I pulled it for clarification. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, we can vote.
Six yes, with Mr. Jakobowski voting no, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is the public presentations. Amy, do you have anybody sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anyone who did not sign up who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll close public presentations.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to board reports.
Mr. Benton?
I'm just going to make another statement about schools, I guess. I just, this is going to be starting on the budget here very shortly. I'm not going to be here, so it's going to be for everybody else. I just implore the schools, Dr. Baker, to please, let's stop some of the, all the fingers going out in all directions, and maybe concentrate this year on the pay and class size. And I mentioned class size again, and it's interesting, I did that last time, and then the board just recently, as of today, got a letter, I'm assuming, from a student. I'll just prove it real quick, talking about the overcrowding in classes. You know, and to come before this board, and, you know, and I know, Mr. Skinner, you said it may have been your fault last time, because you requested a all-inclusive, you know, what it would take to meet all their needs. But every year I've been on the board, it has been a shortfall, as, well, supposedly, where they're, we're always lacking funds for the schools. But when we're going out in all kinds of different directions every year, new programs, new this, new that, instead of concentrating on the vital portions of the, you know, the school functions and the, maybe expanding to the pay and classroom size, we're never going to solve that issue unless we, we put some brakes on and concentrate on those two issues, and just put a hold on all these different programs. And I'm not saying stop what we're already doing. I'm just saying, all these new initiatives, you know, we can't keep on trying to fund and get the pay and class size where it should be when it's just millions and millions every year. And that's, I just implore the schools to do that. And also, there's been seen on social media, discussion about this referendum for transportation again, and maybe the board just using the monies towards projects that weren't included. But it's important to note in that referendum, there's a, there's a section there that basically says, we're borrowing this money, 63 million plus, to undertake a program of capital improvements projects for the improvement of public roads. Then it continues to, with including but not limited to those in the following areas. And it goes on the list, the 95, exit 126, 118, Route One, Route Two, et cetera. So say that we're not using these funds appropriately, where, you know, J-RAMP was canceled, that's not, you know, VDOT didn't support it, you know, what are we supposed to do? We just can't, you know, we've got to look at these other projects also. And it certainly had that phrase in there of including but not limited to, which we, that in my opinion, or the way I read it, means that we can certainly look at other projects not listed. So I just wanted to make that clear to the citizens. That's it.
Mr. Marshall?
I've got one, one thing for the board tonight, and I would like to bring up the National Association of Counties. They've, they've got an initiative where they are trying to get legislations passed on a federal level to increase the amount of money we get from the payment in lieu of taxes program. Currently, FY 2019, and payment in lieu of taxes is money from the federal government for federally owned land, so our national parks. Since we can't tax a national park, they send us a payment in lieu of the taxation. 2019, it was $22,646. If we could tax the federal parks, the amount would be estimated to be 607,000. So I would like to make it in a form of a motion that our board has staff draft a letter for us to send our congressional representatives in support of the increase in the payment in lieu of taxes that the National Association of Counties is supporting. And I'd like to make that in the form of a motion, unless there's any other discussion.
Is there any discussion? Not, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
Did you have any more report, Mr.?
No, sir, nothing else to report.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. One quick one, Ed. We need to talk to VDOT. To my surprise is they've, they paved Lee's Hill South about two years ago. They've now paved Truman is they've, they paved Lee's Hill South about two years ago. They've now paved Trune and our other neighborhood, but the oldest neighborhood that started this Lee's Hill has not been paved at all, and they're gonna patch it. The time for patching is over, and I did talk to Lynn today, so we'd like to carry this conversation on with VDOT. I think they should, whether it's my district or anybody's other district, they should inform that supervisor of that district what their plans are, because this is, it's just backwards. It's absolutely backwards. You should be doing the oldest roads first and then work your way through that. And we'll continue that conversation with Lynn, but I wanted to let you know that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. Got a couple things. There's a story in the paper about red light cameras that had brought up and brings out all kinds of comments of people that are concerned about government using it for a cash cow and, you know, other things such as that. My whole purpose in bringing it up was, we have a safety issue. In fact, the day after that story ran, I was at a red light and to make a right and looked and two cars on a dead red, not even a yellow to a red, it was a red and they came flying through. So, we have a safety issue. If it's red light cameras, fine. If it's not, no big deal. But we need to find a way to address this issue. And I actually was, got a communication from a person who, known for a while, been pretty politically harsh on me, but still friendly enough. And this person had said that basically they agree that we need, whether it's red light cameras or something else, some type of safety, and she listed a bunch of intersections, mainly on Route Three, that had red light runners that they see constantly. And in fact, a member of her family was involved in a, an accident that could have been even worse than it was because the person did run a red light. So, whatever solution that we come up with is, that's what I want to get to, because it's about safety and we need to fix the safety problem that we have. Second one, I'll just respond to Mr. Benton because I know I say a lot on social media about the bond referendum, and yes, in fact, it does say that language and that's fine. I've never said that it was illegal to do what was done. What I have always said is, when you lay out projects to the public and you say you're gonna do these things and then things leapfrog over, in my opinion, and I will continue to say this, that is wrong. I have problems with traffic on Lafayette, on Route One, at Four Mile Fork, and they're horrendous problems. That's why those things were stuck in there. That's why we did a traffic study on Route Two and down on Route One and Four Mile Fork, was to find the areas that needed to be fixed that were presented to this board for us to then fix it with the bond money that was specifically set aside. These other projects that are being paid with bond money were not even in there. If they're, and I've never said that they were not good projects, but find a different way to pay for them. That's all that I have ever said, but I will continue to say that. And I will tell you, I go to community meetings for rezonings that are coming up and all that I hear from is, from constituents, is traffic and school overcrowding. And people are very upset. And then you go down to Massaponix with all the building that's going on there and all of the residential that's coming in down there. And the improvements to our road system is just not happening. The last thing that I have is the CBRC. This board, back last June, directed the CBRC to look into and start building a database based upon county departments, using state and federal mandates as a baseline, and then comparing that to our peer group so that we understand where we are spending our money. I've had no report back. I have not seen anything from anybody. And yet, at the last CBRC meeting, they were delving into other issues. It's been a year and a half, or nearly a year and a half, and I think that that is important information that we get so that we can understand our budget and how our budget is created and see if there are areas in which we can cut. Thank you.
Mr. Glaufton?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. Mr. Skinner actually said the same thing I was gonna state, is I'd like to get VDOT more in front of us, more on a regular basis, because they hadn't disappeared for quite some time. And I've been looking at a lot of the, you know, subdivisions in the Chancery District and the roads are deteriorating faster than any work's getting done. So, they did talk about some slurry mixtures and some improvements and all that, but I agree. They need to come here and lay out the overall plan of when and how they're going to do each one of these subdivisions. I keep getting the, oh, it's in the website somewhere. I don't want, I don't want that from VDOT. I want them to come here and show us by subdivision when it is targeted to be done. I think they owe that to us at the minimum. So, if you could do that, Ed, I'd appreciate that. I think that follows all that Gary was asking for as well. Thanks.
Mr. Ross?
Deborah, I'm not sure if you're here because of, I had in my Outlook calendar, actually, that this is the meeting to come to, to talk about going to the hundred percent assessed value on personal property tax. So, I'll ask you or the, or Ed or county staff, but I think it's you, Ms. Williams, that I'm still interested in going to the fully hundred percent assessed value and then cutting that rate in half so that it's clear across, comparable to many counties that are doing that. And I know that budget season isn't here and I couldn't have reminded myself without my Outlook reminder that said, this is the meeting to bring it back up again, that you said you'd be looking at that. So, I just respectfully ask that you look at it again at this time for, for our next budget cycle. If, yep, if you have something to say, come on up. Yeah, I, yeah, no, yeah, if it wasn't for my Outlook brain, I wouldn't have one at all, so, but I'm glad I have it.
No, actually, we have been working on that with IS, trying to see if we can get the program to work correctly. We have run into some errors that are difficult, but we are working on it and we were hoping to be able to come back and say, hey, we've got it to where we can go with that if that board decides to go with that.
Thank you. Is that why you came tonight? Out of curiosity?
No, there were two other agendas, the rollback tax or land use and then the Board of Equalization, but I'm glad you asked.
And I'm glad you came. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Right. And then the second thing I had was just to kind of piggyback a little bit on the transportation bond referendum. So, in particular, I did want to bring up some things that changed after the two thousand and fourteen bond referendum, especially on transportation happened. One was, at the time, VDOT used to match us ten million a year, and they changed the rules on us. They changed that they would only match up to five million a year, ten million every two years. So, where we had a kind of a double bang for our buck was the intention when it went out there, we lost that. Also, the J ramp that was a big part of that bond referendum that would have cut up behind the car max back over two oh eight, the Federal Highways Administration said it would break two oh eight, so they disapproved it. We couldn't, we can't do that. I'd like to say that the bond referendum is a borrowing line of credit. It's not a requirement that we have to borrow that. And I personally feel, and I think it's been said by almost every member up here, we, Spotsylvania County, cannot take on all the transportation costs for the area. It has to come from the state and the federal level. Just an interchange off of I ninety-five, which I certainly don't believe that we, as Spotsylvania County residents, should pay for, is about the same as our entire budget for a year. And then that includes going to schools. So, we just, and that's one interchange off I ninety-five. We have a small portion of Gordon Road or Harrison Road at the end where it hits Gordon, eleven to fourteen million dollars for about four hundred yards of road. We just can't put county resources to that or we'll, we'll be taxing us out of, out of living here. And then I would like to say that I believe we have about one point eight billion dollars coming our way, and anybody that drives up north can see a lot of changes happening on I ninety-five. As a matter of fact, I think that they are, one of the reasons it's slowing down I ninety-five because everybody's looking at the construction on I ninety-five, but it really is a feat to be seen that happens over there in the median. But it, hopefully, these, unfortunately, they will bring relief, but then that will probably bring more commuters, which then will be more traffic. But I guess it's a self-licking ice cream cone. And I think that's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
I have no report.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have a couple of items for the board. I have updates on CIP projects, the animal shelter expansion and renovation, the contractors working to install supporting utility infrastructure with work actively moving forward on water mains, gas service and electrical relocations. The judicial center expansion and renovation. Staff, and I'm concerned over the current contractor progress compared to the proposed schedule. Project update meeting is scheduled for tomorrow to review recovery schedules, subcontractor contracts and outstanding submittals. They are behind schedule. We have sent letters, but we continue to work to try to rectify that situation. The courthouse sidewalk, a pre-bid was held today for the courthouse area sidewalk improvements with the bid scheduled for opening on October ninth. Hunting Run Reservoir Phase Two, the contractors encountered rock during construction, which has set back several items on the schedule. Staff is working to alter design as needed to mitigate rock-related issues. Berkeley and Todd's Tavern Community Center, staff continues to work to determine implementation schedules associated with the two wells. The level of service in these two facilities has been reduced to comply with the Virginia Department of Health Regulations. Company Six, the schematic design workshops have been completed and the architect is working on conceptual design. And then finally, S-Power. S-Power has engaged utility staff in the development of a cost share associated with the planned Fawn Lake zone improvements. These improvements include approximately thirteen thousand, seven hundred feet of sixteen-inch water line that will replace the existing twelve-inch transmission main and to move forward with the tank and booster station design construction in Section twenty-two of Fawn Lake. The cost share will include a total of three point five million in utility improvements funding provided by S-Power. The basic conditions include a fifty percent cost share with the county on the sixteen-inch water main improvement, with the surplus cost share funding being applied to the tank and the booster station design and construction. The cost share is being submitted to the county attorney's office this week for formal development. And then also on the Phase One site plan, comments were sent to S-Power on September thirteenth and we are awaiting revisions. The early clearing and grading plan for Phase One was approved today. The substation site plan, it's a third review, is in with comments. Those are due September thirtieth. We've provided comments on the BMP agreement, which is the stormwater agreements. We had agreed to do a blanket access easement for maintenance, but their lender has raised objection to the blanket easement concept. So, we're working on alternative language to that. They now have to decide on how to proceed by either leaving our form language or provide easements or suggest new alternative languages. Also, I'd like to inform the board that five hundred thousand dollars was wired from S-Power yesterday to the foundation, and I'll be setting up a meeting with Terry McCauley of the foundation either later this week or early next week. So, those are the updates on the projects that we have going on.
Mr. Benton?
It is, so it's, I guess it sounds like S-Power's doing what they're, for the most part, is their commitments to Fawn Lake and the upgrades and stuff like that.
That's correct.
So, that's contrary, because we keep on getting letters from a set group of individuals that are making these claims that they're not doing what they're supposed to do. Do you know if they're hampering at all any of our staff from doing their jobs with all their stuff?
Not that I'm aware of. I've got Leon in the audience. Leon, are you aware of, Kimberly, you're also out there as well, if you can help answer the question.
Are these individuals hampering y'all at all as far as keeping track of what you need to with S-Power, making sure they're doing what they're supposed to do with all their stuff?
I wouldn't say they're, I wouldn't say they're hampering us, but it is a task.
Oh, Mr. President, I know we like responding back to citizens, but there are three, four, five, six of these from Fawn Lake that are the main individuals with the emails to us and I'm sure requests of planning and zoning. And I don't, I'm not sure if staff really needs to, I don't know. Maybe I'm on a slippery slope, but at some point, you just need to tell them to shut up and let us do our dang on jobs.
If I may, Mr. Benton, because you're looking at me and I think you're directing a question to me.
Well, I'm waiting for, I was waiting to get hit on some stuff too, so.
Yeah, the reason, the reason for the updates to the board is to make sure that we're transparent to the public. So, we continually, in public, update the board on the progress of the project. And certainly, if there was anything impeding the progress of the project, I would certainly inform the board and get the help that we need.
All right. Maybe they can have a form letter to the main group that they wait to the board meeting, they'll get the updates there, instead of bothering them with having to drop what they're doing to keep, as a massive project, and I'd rather them keep their focus on their, you know, what we've committed to with S-Power and what S-Power's committed to with us, and to keep them all in line and have the checks and balances that we need to go forward with it, instead of having to drop what we're doing and answering a bunch of crap that's repeatedly submitted to us. And, you know, they certainly don't wait to a board meeting to send out public emails to every board member and staff member around claiming that, you know, S-Power's not doing this and S-Power's not doing this and the county's liable for this. And, you know, I just, at some point, you just need, especially with the, again, the main group, you know, maybe we can need to somehow politely tell them just to watch for the updates instead of bothering our staff, because I can only imagine what they're getting, since, you know, anyway, I'll be quiet. I guess if you're not getting any, any kind of feedback from the board, you can tell them that. Or if you need me to, let me, I'll, I'll draft a letter to them. I'll be happy to.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross?
So, Mr. Benton, I appreciate what you're doing, but I do think we have probably a precedent that if the public chimes in and has questions from staff, that it's treated as a FOIA request in the past. And I haven't heard staff say that there's a detriment to their, their job, and I think that's, that they owe it to us or that their job's being impacted by, by the responses. But I would, I would submit that we need to be transparent. We need to continue to answer questions that arise. You know, they are our residents and whether it's, we disagree or disagree, agree or disagree with them, we should be transparent and provide them with those, those answers, until it impacts us. And then even then, we should still do it.
Mr. Benton?
I agree, but, you know, it's, it's the same ones over and over, and they're not giving us any time, or staff, any time to get to those stages and those timelines for them to do something. They're just making these allegations and putting it out on social media and putting it out to the emails to us about their crap. And that's what it's been so far, because every time we've gotten a slew of emails, sure enough, Mr. Petrovich gives us a update and sure enough, S-Power's online and our staff is online, keeping them in line. And I just, you know, they want it's done right, but yet they want to spend thousands of their own dollars on FOIAs and wasting our staff's time instead of keeping their focus on, on where it should be. And it's a shame.
Where are we next?
Okay, Mr. Chair. That brings us to presentations and reports by others. And we have with us this evening Chief Emery, who's going to give us an update on hazardous preparedness.
All right. Good evening.
Can I, can I have the floor computer, please?
You're good?
You're good?
All right. Good evening, gentlemen. For those in the, in the audience, those watching on TV or online, my name is Matthew Emery. I serve as the Division Chief of Emergency Management Logistics for Spotsylvania County Department of Fire, Rescue and Emergency Management. Tonight, been asked to come and provide just an update on Spotsylvania County emergency planning and preparedness. When we talk about emergency planning and preparedness, the first step we always have to start with is identifying the threats. So, when we talk obviously, natural disasters being weather events, our infrastructure, can be attacks to bridges, roadways, power grids, hospitals, water supply systems, water distribution systems, riots, civil unrest, obviously, we've seen that. Then terrorism is obviously a significant and key concern when we talk about emergency planning and preparedness. So that can be biological, bomb, IED type of threat, active shooter, cyber attacks, and that's all encapsulated in that Seaburn, chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear and explosives. And then, of course, hazardous material releases. That can be leaks, spills, discharges, toxic chemicals, it can be something dispersed by a bomb, can be radiological in nature as well. So taking those threats, we then go to our emergency planning. So staff in the county have, over many years, have worked to develop plans and one of the critical parts of that is that the public disclosure of key topics and key things in those plans can threaten public safety by exposing critical information processes, procedures and critical infrastructure. So while the presentation tonight is on a high level, be assured that there are critical and key information that are in those plans that we'll talk about. The first of those being the Emergency Operations Plan. So that is the very large, broad, thorough plan that provides and establishes the legal organization based on emergency operations for Spotsylvania County. It gives direction, responsibility to county departments and non-government organizations that we partner with to provide emergency planning, preparedness, response and recovery for the county. The Emergency Operations Plan is updated every four years. It was brought to the board in 2017 and our next update again will be in 2021, so we'll be presenting that in the early part of '21 for you. Anexes are a major part of that because the Emergency Operation Plan is a very large and very robust document, but there are certain parts that have to be extrapolated, they have to be pulled out and have to be very specific and very detailed, more so than what may just be in the Emergency Operations Plan. So the annexes I'll talk about on the next slide. General orders, rules, regulations. So each department we have that works with emergency management and works in the emergency preparedness process has their own general orders, SOPs, rules and regulations, and that's their normal day-to-day operations and it can also govern those activities that they would perform during emergency activation for disasters or one of those other risks that we've talked about so far. And those guide the departments and allow them to do their processes and procedures. Our regional MOUs or Memorandums of Understanding, we have those both internally and with some of our regional partners. That can be fire and rescue, that can be law enforcement, can be emergency management-based. Those MOUs can be with, like the Red Cross, the non-government organizations as well. And those allow us to bring them on board and have them as part of our, our planning, our preparedness and our response mechanism without going outside and asking the state for resources as well. So the annexes I spoke about, these are some of those parts of the Emergency Operations Plan that we really have to pull out and we have to be pretty definitive on and a little more so than other areas. So hazardous materials, obviously, that, we talked about those, chemical, nuclear, radiological, biological, any of those hazards that we face, so there's specific planning for that process. One of those, which is kind of unique, is the Radiological Emergency Response Plan. So of course, we know that we have North Anna Nuclear Power Plant and we are a risk locality for that because we are within the ten-mile EPZ or Emergency Protection Zone. So with that, we have a plan that is specific and tailored to that product and that, and that procedure to respond to emergencies at, at that location. There's also civil unrest, which can be law enforcement and public safety centric a lot of times. You know, that's riots, gangs, could be political, could be post-disaster for civil unrest and those, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later as well. The last one for the annex, and this is not all-inclusive, but a good representation, is active shooter and hostile event response. So that, that one is both fire rescue, sheriff's office and will be a recovery process post-active shooter as well. So that's an annex plan that, that lives predominantly with sheriff's office, but fire and rescue has a part and piece in that and planning and preparedness as well for that, so. Before I move to the next slide, when we talk about all this, and I didn't do a slide for this, but I thought it was appropriate to speak about, we talk about the threats, we talk about the Emergency Operations Plan and these annex plans, and it's great to plan, it's great to study what we need to do and identify who's going to do what, when they're going to do it and how they're going to do it. But Spotsylvania County does a really good job of not only doing the planning, but doing the exercise and the training. So we train our staff to understand what their responsibility is, then we exercise that. We do public awareness for the public to be prepared because obviously that's a key part. We do EOP reviews of not only our own EOP, but we do that for other businesses, the community that works with our elderly, so our nursing homes, some of our care facilities, they bring their plans to me, we review those and give them feedback to help them be resilient as well. And we have internal and external training exercises. The most prominent one that we probably do is the Radiological Emergency Response Program. So with North Anna, every two years we do a full EOC exercise, that's sheltering, response, evacuation, monitoring. So all of those things are conducted and were graded by FEMA and Department of Homeland Security. So we're actually, they have representatives that come in, grade us on that, and that's an excellent opportunity for staff to come in, work together. And while a lot of people are concerned that we have a power plant, we're actually blessed because we have that opportunity to, to use that as a training, training opportunity. So just wanted to mention that as well. So I'm going to talk about on the next four slides, a couple of key areas, and this is not all-inclusive, but these are some of the key areas that are part of our public safety preparedness and response program. So mass care evacuations. Sheltering is obviously a critical and key part of that. If you've seen any of the disasters that have occurred, the, the poor folks in the Bahamas, we've had North Carolina, we've had Florida, Texas, if you see those areas, when folks are affected, they, they can't stay in their homes, so we have to bring them to shelter. So we want to receive them, we want to identify what their needs are, determine what their true needs are and facilitate those for, for them. The evacuation routes, those are built into that planning for different areas. So if we have to evacuate them, they're internal evacuation planning, but there's also plans for, as you saw, I think it was Hurricane Matthew, they initially did some evacuations from the Norfolk Hampton Roads area, so there is an evacuation plan that pushes them up into our area. There's also an evacuation plan for Nova or Northern Virginia to push them down to us as well if something were to occur, to occur in DC or in that Northern Virginia area. So we have those in. And then the Health and Human Services, obviously, it's one thing to shelter someone, but there's a lot of needs that go along with that. There's the, the medical care, there's the mental health, there's the spiritual care. So there's a lot of things that go on with sheltering and with that mental health and human services portion that, that we plan for, so. And then feeding, that could be internal feeding at the shelter, which we have in our, in our planning as well, but there can be external feeding, that could be pods or points of distribution. As you've seen in many disasters, they have to go out and have food distribution areas or water distribution, could be medical, a medical pod as well. So those are just a number of the things. We'll move to the next one. Safety and security, this one is predominantly law enforcement centric. They deal with special events for safety and security. Obviously, we have our Stars and Stripes event, our parade, things of that nature, but it can be spontaneous events as well, things that occur due to a death, due to many other activities or threats that, that occur or happen in areas. So VIP security, when a disaster occurs, governors, president, they like to come and show their support and see what's going on, so there could be VIP security for that. But more so getting into the natural man-made disasters, you start looking at areas like Florida when they had to evacuate and then you want to limit access or isolate those damaged areas because you don't want to have looting, you want to protect that. A lot of folks are kind of resistive to leaving because they're concerned about their possessions, so trying to provide that security isolation, that can be access controlled roads and things such as that. Civil disturbance, obviously, providing security could be for a structure, could be for a specific area. We've seen that in Charlottesville where they had critical infrastructure and things like that that they had to secure with that significant of an event going on. And then bomb threats and explosives, obviously, they have to create a safe area and then deal with that threat in and of itself through their response mechanisms. The next is volunteering, probably one of the critical areas and things that we do here in the county. The first being volunteers in police service or VIPS. The sheriff's office uses that program to bring folks in that want to support their, their, their staff. Most of the volunteer staff that I'll talk about won't directly engage in dangerous activities. They'll support in, in other roles to allow the officers or fire and rescue staff to, to perform their duties, but volunteers in police service are active members that are supporting them. The explorer or internship, that is Sheriff Harris's program to allow young folks, teenagers that are trying that, they're trying to figure out what they want to do in life, gives them the opportunity to come in, to get exposure to law enforcement and see if that's the direction they want to go when they transition from school to the working world. So that's a, a good opportunity there. Obviously, the Spotsylvania Volunteer Fire Department, Chancellor Volunteer Fire and Rescue and Spotsylvania Volunteer Rescue Squad are volunteer fire and rescue agencies in the county. These departments are a little unique because they do enter areas that are immediately dangerous to life and health, so that's, that's a unique area for them, but that is where we draw volunteers into and have them serve in our public safety system to support emergency planning, operations and response. There's nonprofit organizations such as American Red Cross, Salvation Army, Dog's East, there's like Southern Baptist Event Relief Program, T-Broom Con. So there's a lot of nonprofit organizations that can come in and if you've, if you've watched the news and seen these folks, a lot of them aren't out there prominent in the front of the cameras, they're kind of behind the scenes just doing, doing the work to support the localities and to help us respond and support the citizens that we serve, so. Oh, and spontaneous volunteers, almost skipped that one. So with anything that happens, you're going to have those folks that just decide on this, all of a sudden, hey, look, I'm going to go, I'm going to go support you. It's a blessing and it's a challenge because it's a blessing because you might need hands to do things and move things, but it's a challenge because they need leadership, they need guidance, and that's sometimes a tough task to get them incorporated into your emergency plan and preparedness. Sometimes it's just spontaneous and they do their own thing and that happens, but we try to safeguard them and incorporate them in when we can, so. Public notification is obviously one of the critical areas where we need to not only make the public aware of what's going on, but prepare them in case of an event that is not spontaneous, a tornado-type event or a radiological emergency from the plant. So Spotsy Alert, and we encourage anyone who's not a member of Spotsy Alert, you can sign up for notifications, that's our mass notification system. You can sign up, you can choose, there's key ones that you will get, so the emergency alerts that come out that require immediate action, amber alerts, things like that, those you're going to get as soon as you sign up. But there's other things that you can sign up for, the utilities department, school notifications, county government closings, a plethora of weather. I think there's forty different weather events on there that you can choose and pick, and if you don't want them, you don't have to sign up for them. So we always ask and, and encourage folks to sign up for our Spotsy Alert system because that's a way for us to immediately, instantaneously send out messages to everyone at the same time. Our traditional media we use to make notifications and to keep folks updated, that's the radio, TV, print media, not quite as much, other than the preparedness part. We do put things out. Social media, social media is really a force multiplier because if you think about, if you can get about fifteen or twenty people that love to repost things, everybody that reposts something has another group of family or friends that expand your reach. So using social media is huge for us because if we can get that message out, and Michelle McGinnis helps us with that, she works with our staff and with the communication staff to push out messaging, and that's really huge. Sheriff's Office as well, other departments putting out social media messages. We have reverse nine-one-one and it's critical to understand the difference between Spotsy Alert and reverse nine-one-one. So Spotsy Alert is a self-sign-up service. So someone decides that they want to receive notifications, whatever they choose, that's what we send them. Reverse nine-one-one is not that. We, we purchase a product of numbers and notifications and contact information, so we do not send out just general notifications to that. If we send a reverse nine-one-one message, we're targeting an area or the county, if that so be it, and it is, it, the message has to be that you need to act or else you will be in danger. So just understanding, Spotsy Alert gives us a number of things that we can use, but reverse nine-one-one is very, very targeted and very specific. And then there's community social network apps, Nextdoor, some of those small group apps that, that can be used to out, reach out to the public as well. And again, as is stated at the beginning, the, the preparedness and planning, this, this being a high-level overview because of confidentiality, we didn't get into, to fine detail about specifics in the plan, but understanding that our Spotsylvania County emergency preparedness is derived through strong partnerships that have been developed over many years, we continue to develop new ones, but it expands beyond the public safety agencies. It goes well beyond into pretty much every department in this county, our non-government partners, our citizen partners, and through planning, training and exercise, it better prepares us for future disasters. Can't prepare for everything, but I believe that Spotsylvania County does a very good job in, in our planning and our preparedness and in our training and exercise. We've been very fortunate, we've not had the kind of impact that some of the others that I've spoke about previously have had, but I believe that we're, we're well on our way to be prepared to, to deal with those and to manage those and, and respond to them. So I'll leave you with that if there's any questions.
Mr. Skinner?
Can, if the governor says it's an evacuation, calls for you, can the police, can you make a person leave their home in an evacuation where the governor says mandated?
I don't want to step into the sheriff's grounds, but I'm pretty sure the answer is no. You can recommend to them and you can pretty much tell them, I'm running, you should leave and follow me, but ultimately I don't believe you can force them to go out, but I'd have to defer to the sheriff on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? I heard one story, it may be apocryphal, from a hurricane in Florida that the, there's a hurricane party that didn't want to leave and the sheriff's office told them, well, will you at least put on these tow tags so we'll know, we'll be able to identify the bodies?
I believe Florida is probably the most progressive in telling folks that decide not to leave, please put your social security number in permanent ink on your body so that we can identify you. Because unfortunately, if you don't leave, there's a level or a timeframe that you're going to be susceptible to whatever that storm is, and, and that's why we make the recommendations. Sometimes we recommend to leave early. When Hurricane Matthew was coming, the governor made the decision and, and they spent quite a bit of money to prepare for that because you never know when it's going to take a right or a left-hand turn. So Matthew did, unfortunately, we didn't receive that damage, but you have to make the best decision and inform the public and unfortunately, some will stay and that's unfortunate when, when they do, so.
No more questions or comments from the board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, that brings you to a closed meeting.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this will be your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn and close meeting for discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically the healthcare industry. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn to closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically a land use matter. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn to closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically a utilities matter and a contract for services. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn to closed meeting for discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, and briefings by staff members, legal counsel or law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related threat to public safety, discussion of information subjects to exclusion in subdivision two or fourteen of Section 2.23705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building or structure, or the safety of such persons using. building, structure, information technology system or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building or structure, or the safety of such persons using such facility, building or structure, specifically cybersecurity threats and plans related thereto. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2, 3711, A5, 7, 8, 9 and 19, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Motion for Mr. Skinner, we can vote.
Seven yes, motion passes.
A recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County, Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene into closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Jakobowski?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, that brings us to new business. The next board of supervisors meeting is October the 8th at 4:30 PM here in the boardroom.
Motion to adjourn. Vote on the motion to adjourn.
Okay, last one, last one to, to make it.
Seven yes, motion passes.